Hold the meeting to order. Mike will do it. Ladies and gentlemen, please.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this debate. Many blessings that we enjoy in this country. Pray for guidance and direction as we discuss township business this evening. That we may be inspired and directed in the correct path that will benefit the community. These blessings we pray for in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ.
And I want to give you the pledge of belief.
Pledge of belief. United States of America, and consider repelling pro which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call if you would Heather.
Scott?
Yes.
Kristi?
Here.
Nola?
Present.
Jack?
Here.
Lee? Yeah, Lee?
Here.
Michael?
Yes, here.
Next, we have approval of the agenda if we have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Heather.
Motion by Nola, do we have support? Support by Lee or discussion among the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have approval of past meeting minutes. We have the meeting minutes from July eighth one twenty four.
That motion would be within our meeting minutes.
Motion by Nola, do we have support?
Support.
Support by Kristi and discussion on the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Next, we have the township report. Any comments from the board on the township report?
The town here would be impressed.
We're going to place that on file. Next, we have paying the bills. Paying the house income, pay the bills. Which will be by Michael, do we have support?
Support.
Board by Nola, any discussion among the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Kristi?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And then Heather, yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the fire department reports. If you would, she.
Busy last month again, well over on in calls, everything's been going well. As you had known before, we did officially take the boat out of service. Beyond repair at that point. I will figure something out in the near future with the winter season being almost over. The summer season obviously being gone a bit early. Seeing issues this morning will make, will may do until next spring. A couple of things that happened, we had a couple of fires here recently, not in our station, but a couple items were damaged. Doing business, so I'm going to have to come to the board. Place one of our fans and buy a couple of tools. Those are, I won't need to come get those, sand I might have to. We're trying to get down to a cheaper price, but it's probably be right on five thousand for it. But we're going to need it, but we'll talk on Wednesday with the rest of the staff. And we'll sign that as our report.
Perfect, thank you. Next, we have planning commission report, if you would, Lee.
Uh, July thirtieth. First item was a zoning change, twenty four zero dash zero three at forty two sixty one Whitehall Road. To be later on our agenda. Um, goes from R one to C two. Um, the forty two sixty one Whitehall parcel previously was zoned C one. Um, contains a commercial building. Um, it's just north of Icebox brand. Um, ice cream there. Uh, I think the parcel is designated for commercial use in the future land use map. And the motion for approval of the report. Second was a special use and site plan review for thirty one seventy Whitehall Road. Capes under any warehousing and self-storage. Um, proposed sixteen hundred foot addition to existing building and additional forty hundred square foot building. Um, will be for, um, just pretty basic, uh, self-storage. No, no heating, cooling, no nothing like that. Um, also considered is the option of having a single building join in the two, so current building with the new building, as long as the building spec doesn't require fire suppression depending on the size. Otherwise, the cost goes up greatly. Um, motion approved. Um, under unfinished business, uh, it's a site plan, our special use and site plan review for twenty three sixty seven piece Riley Thompson Road. Um, it's for a gentleman looking to dig a pond and have a lot of the sand removed, it's like an acre of pond. Um, originally the meeting was on June twenty fifth. A storm day. Um, so at the meeting, uh, the gentleman wasn't here. There was only four board members here. We met on the thirtieth. All the four members were here for that. That were here at the first previous meeting, so we couldn't make a decision. Um, a special meeting was planned for August fifth. And I forgot to watch, I didn't make that one because I completely forgot. So many things going on.
You are approved.
But it was approved. I would imagine was, I mean, we were talking about it, but we just haven't enough people to make.
Yep.
Next was a site plan review for High End Road. Um, final site plan, that's where the proposed, uh, PUD and condominium. It's the high-end storage, pretty much what it is. Motion approved for township board, which we'll also see you later tonight. Uh, other site plan review for Muller Road, north of Stroud.
Really?
True. Um, application to obtain a portion of, uh, High End Road. Motion approved. Last was the draft ordinance for minimum roof pitch. Um, zoning ordinance currently requires a minimum of four twelve pitch. Um, zoning board appeals had a recent variance request for a manufactured home with a three twelve pitch. Um, the reason you can upgrade to four twelve on a manufactured home, but greatly raise the cost, so kind of defeats the purpose of buying the manufactured home. On board. Or discussion centered around not putting undue restrictions on people, motion approved for eliminating.
Thank you. Next, we have planning and zoning report. If you would, she.
In July, we approved fifteen permits, three of which were for new houses. Enforcement actions, we investigated fourteen cases, six of which were closed. An additional case, the light was removed, but court fines still need paid, so we'd like to open until those fines are paid.
Perfect.
My name is Zon.
Thank you. Thanks, we have maintenance and grounds report, if you would, Justin.
And the last, um, maintenance, I mentioned that we should have the, uh, hoops installed by this point in time. Unfortunately, it's, uh, didn't work like I hoped. Um, got some hardware for those hoops and it was a complete wrong size. Went back to the company, they told me, oh, you can't make the size for that size hoop. So I had to head start that stretch. And I have a new set ordered and it'll be here, I just got, uh, got emailed today. Um, not this upcoming Monday, but by Monday. It should be shipped. Um, that's at Beagle Sports Park. There we also had a complaint from a local resident who had said that the playground's in rough shape, which is. So I reached out to a couple of different, um, playground companies to look at different structures and sent them pictures first to see if we could revamp some of that we have, and they recommended we board it up and tear it down. So I'm actually going to move forward and I believe that's, what I'm going to do is tear that one down and looking at replacement, put smaller things. And I'm being, but this is something that's going to be coming down the pipelines, we need new equipment there. Um, at Beagle, I also had hooked some new soccer nets. And then over at Questrian Park, we installed a couple of mountain blacks as well as picking table. And everything else, Pabix, Catalpa, Dog's, Bike Path, Twin H山 Transport Station, and both cemeteries are all being maintained and doing well.
Perfect, thank you. Next, we have a one-off, the White Lake Community Library, Virginia, if you want to come up and let us, any update on that?
There's a hard copy of the letter and the other report and several copies of the annual report.
Perfect, thank you.
As you said, my name is Virginia DeMora, I'm the current director of the White Lake Community Library. I've been there since the building opened in two thousand, I was a story tamperer for the first eighteen years, and I've been the director since two thousand nineteen. Um, and I just wanted to give you a quick update on how things are going. We did receive a clean audit, we are financially in a good position, we have an adequate fund balance, it grows a little bit every year. We have been working really hard to get all the maintenance done that needed to be done after twenty five years of being open, so HVAC updates, all of that. Made some energy efficiency improvements, that is saving us a lot of money, we're trying very hard to be good stewards with the taxpayer dollars. Um, we're super excited about a grant application, I don't want to jinx myself by saying it out loud, but we're hoping to get solar panels for the work that will offset our electric needs to have three hundred thousand dollars and save us over over the life of the panels twenty, twenty-five years. We'll see how that comes out. Um, we're in the midst of our strategic planning process, and I would like to cordially invite all of you to attend the, um, what are they calling it, the stakeholder focus groups, which are being held this Wednesday, starting shortly this Friday, tomorrow. There's one at eleven and one at one o'clock, that's the library. So if you'd like to come and meet with an outside facilitator to just talk about the library and ways which it could provide better services to the community, we'd love to hear from you. Um, and the last thing I want to tell you about is the other thing I'm super excited about, which is our second annual Good Neighbor Day dinner on September twenty sixth. I don't know if any of you came to that last year?
I did not.
We set up one lawn table next to the playhouse in Whitehall and set up for eighty people, and we just served them a free dinner with table prompts out, conversation prompts, to get people just talking, neighbor to neighbor, face to face, no agenda. And it was fabulous, we had such a good time, and people immediately started asking when the next one was going to be. So the next one is Thursday, September twenty sixth, and hopefully you will dance. Did you have any questions for me about any of the stuff that was in your package of September twenty sixth? Please, I'm asking, yeah. I think five thirty or six.
I'm guessing it's on the website.
Well, that's up to Amy, I haven't looked, Michael. Not sure it's there yet, so it's more than a month away, but going into catering this year, so I will be there too.
Perfect.
For your time.
Thank you much.
It's all of your township eligible for cards. All of that, don't touch eligible for cards, not necessarily at the White Lake Library, but your card from the senior areas of libraries.
Works here.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Next, we have visiting official in Canada updates. Do we have any visiting official or Canada updates? We see her stop by right before the meeting, but he had a conflicting meeting that he had to go to. We will get to our first public comment section, so if you keep it on agenda here for three minutes, if you want to come up to the lectern and let us know what you think on the item we're going over today. Feel free. Congrats. There will be another section at the end if you want to comment after. So moving on to our decision items, we have the zoning change on Whitehall Road, and Lee had mentioned this in his report. And there's one that has just been changed from residential, there's one here that was zoned C one and was zoned, and it was zoned to residential and is now being zoned back to C one. Uh, so, and this went through the planning commission for its process. Seeing issues with it?
Nope. I make a motion to approve the zoning change ordinance for the three parcels under consideration.
Motion by Nola, do we have support?
Support.
Support by Sean, any discussion among the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Heather, yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the site plan on High End Road. This, we partially saw before because of the planning development zoning change, which we've heard previously, but the next two items are on the same project. So this is a site plan that went through the planning commission that we also mentioned. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the site plan with a copy and consideration on my vote.
Motion by Nola, do we have support? Support by Lee, any discussion among the board?
Hearing none, may I speak? Mr. Mike, may I speak?
Yes.
Like on the record that I had recommended, uh, the zone area, which was going to be the buildings, to be separated by twenty feet. I was not invited to the planning commission meeting, they chose not to accept my, I only recommend parents, do the buildings be, and feed each other and under storage, just like be on the record. Yep.
Is that for a fire hazard?
Yes, ma'am.
The planning commission had discussed, um, even up to thirty feet. But approving it as, as it sits now.
Which is ten feet.
I thought we heard, I thought we did hear that. You, you heard that, but.
I had said I would, I would highly recommend toward twenty, it was not invited to the meeting.
Okay.
Go ahead and approve, I'm fine. I'm perfectly fine, I just want you to hear on the record that I had asked for twenty feet. Did I, did I not, you know? I said I would like twenty feet.
Yeah, I believe it was over.
Correct.
So, yeah, zoning allows for it to be the.
It's not my discussion, ma'am, I just gave my opinion and just wanted to be heard on the record. Thank you.
Zoning allows you.
We do not have a minimum between buildings, that was beside the discretion of the planning commission.
Okay. Okay.
Any discussion among the board? Motion for support? Roll call vote.
Michael?
Yes.
Kristi? Jeffrey?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Heather, yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the condo on High End Road, considering that same development. Now, I have the entire condominium association paperwork in the reference packet, I did not include it in here, it's really pages on its own. Um, I usually read everything that goes into these packets, but I will say that I mostly skimmed, uh, that condo association, fifty pages, but it seems to address all the normal stuff if an issue comes up within the condo association in that area. Um, so it is available if anyone wants it, but this is approving that condo association. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve condo residences.
By Lee, do we have support?
Support.
Support by Scott, any discussion among the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Kristi?
Nola?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jeffrey, yes.
Motion pass. Next, we have lake treatment special assessment residential, so, and the reason we see this is because we had a fund balance, a decent fund balance for weed treatments in those lake funds. We've been reducing that, bringing up fund balance down a little bit, there's no reason to hold that amount of money in there. I've had inquiries on whether it can be used for other developments on the lake to improve, uh, program or stock fish. It cannot, uh, specifically afford weed treatments, there's no reason to keep it high, uh, that will have to be considered in, in future years, that's why they're considered individually. Uh, the way these are written up, usually the way we budgeted it, was that there wouldn't be a special assessment on North Lake, Middle Lake, and West Lake, but there would be a special assessment at about a half its normal rate, so fifty dollars, on Twin Lake. And that's the way I have these written up.
I make a motion to approve the special assessment resolutions for weed treatment on Twin Lake, North Lake, Middle Lake, and West Lake.
Motion by Nola, do we have support? Support by Michael, any discussion among the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Scott?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
And Scott, yes.
Motion pass. Next, we have the land sale proposal on Russell Road. When we're doing the large sale, this is the portion of two point five three acres that was sectioned out. And we, in the last meeting, approved it moving forward with true cash value, for my sector, and Realtor comparables, I have those, I have comparables in the reference packet, but I included quotes in here, and the true cash value comes down at twenty nine thousand ninety-five dollars. The Realtor comparables has a little bit more of an explanation because it comes out to eleven thousand dollars per acre, about twenty eight thousand dollars for the total sale. But the Realtor's opinion on this is also that it's probably not realistically worth that, and it's probably about approximately fourteen thousand dollars. So there is, just because of the desirability of it, uh, so there is somewhat of a judgment call.
Well, they're always.
And in this, in this meeting, we're looking at setting what the minimum bid will be for opening bids in the next meeting.
This is the man that already has property right next to it, right?
He had one small piece under contract, um, was, was the last, I knew the last updated. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, if the realistic price is fourteen thousand, I'll go with fifteen thousand. I'm in the middle of the fifteen thousand for the two point five three acre commercial.
All right, motion by Nola, do we have a support?
All support.
Support by Michael, any discussion among the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Kristi?
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes. Next, we have the Pickers Patch liquor license resolution. And so they're working on expanding their business, they have some creative ideas, uh, that, you know, hopefully end up being successful and some interesting items, that's for sure. This is part of that. And so they're working on getting their state license, and they need a resolution from the local government. Uh, they had sent this in, I double-checked with their legal counsel on exactly what they're looking for, it was here tonight, it was class C liquor license. And so if we have everything filled out correctly up to this point, I just have to go down and fill out the rest. It was on M one twenty, where as I said, it's a green house. And they've been, they're looking at adding some sheds for some consignment shots and that type of thing, making a bearded garden where people can walk around with some food, some snacks, that type of thing.
I make a motion to approve the liquor license resolution for the Pickers Patch LLC.
Motion by Heather, do we have support? Support by Kristi, any discussion among the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Scott?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Heather, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Next, we have the township millage rates. We see this every year for proving the millage rates, they get calculated by the county, and there's the heavy rollback, so the millage rates themselves get reduced a little bit every year uh, because of nineteen seventies laws. Um, the last, these are the numbers that we're looking at to officially confirm for the county for millage rates for the township moving forward this year.
I'll make a motion to approve the millage rates for twenty twenty-four Texas.
Motion by Kristi, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Nola, any discussion among the board? Hearing none? Roll call vote.
Michael?
Yes.
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Kristi? Jeffrey?
Yes.
Heather, yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have our discussion items, the first one being the West Lake vegetation study report. So the vegetation study that we approved, uh, in the last meeting, did come back, so decent, decent turnaround on that. I also included the water quality report from People Lake Professional Lakes in the packet as well. And so, and I included the email from Restorative Lake Sciences as well. And so they said that the lake essentially is light on vegetation, it's either at or below, uh, is how they phrase it at one point, and then at another point, they describe it as devoid of vegetation. And so, you know, it seemed like two slightly different descriptions, but nevertheless. And so it's light on vegetation, they don't recommend, uh, heavy treatments for sure, they don't recommend any more treatments, uh, for this year, and essentially a reassessment, uh, for next year, obviously they're saying we can use our services again next year, right? Uh, and so it leaves us in a spot, we have the, the map sign here to show where the vegetation is, kind of around the head, that type of thing. Uh, it leaves us in a spot of still deciding on what to do on West Lake, we can contract, but you know, PLM to do an insane, we've done on the lakes for one year or five years. We did contract with Solitude, they were the other company that would book forth quotes, do contract short term or long term. We did technically contract with no one, and we get another study next year and see where, where it is and how it is, and then reassess from there. Any thoughts, ideas?
My first thought is PLM is obviously doing a good job. They argue that would be the assessment that came back, right? That they're, they're supposed to manage the weeds in the lake, which there are very little of them.
Right, and there is, so there's a disagreement somewhat among, among the residents. Right, the residents on each side, you know, you don't leave for the disagreement on this, but, uh, when they talk to me, there is. So some of the residents want to do a lot of fishing, and so we want a lot of vegetation, that the fish can spawn, and that type of thing. Other residents don't fit, and they would prefer for there to be zero vegetation, that to be stainless, like, ooh, essentially. And, I mean, I was talking with one person on the north side of, of West Lake, and I was just, he was out there, and I was out there checking out something else. And I was asking him what, what hadn't thought of it, and he's like, eh, there's a, there's a few weeds around my dock, and I think they should probably treat a little more. Uh, and so there is, you know, there's some disagreement on the exact, like, perfect state of the lake, essentially. So the weeds are well kept in track, the, the real question becomes is, is, is the two fault on that side? Where does that leave us on, on the decision of what to do with it?
I mean, they already, they already recommended not treating it, and then even do it, survey next year to see if they've been treated.
That's Restorative Lake Sciences, the one that did this vegetation study, not the one that treats it, which is not PLM. You know, so two different companies. And the other, the other company that, uh, came out there and we looked at the lake together, Solitude, they also thought it was over, over treated, but obviously their interest was in that way to try to get us to sign a contract.
So when you, when you treat the lake, you have to treat the whole lake, or can you treat?
No, PLM does not treat the whole lake as of now, they spot treat where is a sea invasive species.
But there's not enough vegetation at all for the fish to flourish.
It's been, is some of the, some of the complaint.
And we want fishing.
Over the last couple of years.
We want fishing lakes, right?
Is, is PLM still testing first before they treat like they originally contracted in two thousand nine?
They do a, an inspection, um, on a monthly basis, doesn't mean they treat every month, they just treat as needed.
And that's what we started in two thousand nine, was to make sure that they tested first to find out if it needed treatment before they just blanked it through. So aren't they still doing that now in all the lakes?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it, it really is just about maintaining the balance. And so, I mean, it makes sense to give a contract, if we're going to do a contract in some time this year, it doesn't mean we have to necessarily decide next month, um, but somewhere, somewhere in the near future, probably.
Yes, I discussed with them, we just keep on going, we don't even discuss, they could. I don't know, I can't remember what we said before, I mean, if we wanted less or more trees or whatever, that'd be just vegetation.
Right.
Like, hey, can we pull back a little bit more, depending on their report.
We could stick with them and just, and just say that we prefer them to treat a little less over the next few years, and then, and then the board can monitor.
That'd be smart. Have we discussed with PLM the findings of the survey?
Not the survey itself, no. So I've discussed the, the lake with them and, and this concern, so, and they, they think they're treating appropriately, which makes sense, so we wouldn't get treated now.
Is there a way to treat the invasive species while introducing native species to make everyone? Not gonna need to.
They, they treat for the invasive species.
Right.
But I'm not, I.
I don't know if it would like, like, I'm not like a native, everybody takes over West.
West Lake wants it to look like like that.
Some parts, some parts.
Get on some money, we can. Everything, sort of like planting fish in the lake.
Yes.
And it was wasting their money because of the lakes was being treated.
It's hard. Yes. Let me hear the complaints with that. All right, let's not break out into the lake debate. I'm going to sell my four years having those debates.
You like people.
But, uh, but nevertheless, I mean, I can, I can inquire in a little more, I guess, with, uh, with all three of those companies domestically. And my guess is that all three of the companies will say to go with them, because they would be bad companies if they didn't try to sell their services for a lake. Uh, but I can work out, maybe have some more discussions on that. Anything else on that? All right, so home generator folks, so I officially only have one bet. Brewett's brought, he would be out of our reasonable price range, um, for our project initially, he thought that it wouldn't, and he was going for it, and, and then he thought that. Um, for our project initially, he thought that it wouldn't, and he was going for it, and, and then he thought that he'd be out of it. Um, so we didn't put one in. Blasco, the author's back. The way they've quoted it is with two separate units. One's from this building and one from the maintenance building. Uh, because we have the possibility of taxes, elections, hearing, whatever it may be up here. And as I was thinking about that, in the back, especially if you have winter or something, we really need to be able to get out to clear some of the township, uh, areas. We don't, we don't do roads, obviously, but we need to be able to clear some of the township areas. So that building ends up being somewhat important as well. And so this came back as twenty-three thousand dollars basically. Um, for each building, there would be some fees to consumers as well. Now, I have another company. It's actually a combination between fluid and portaves. And they were just in today, um, looking at it, discussing that, and from now, probably, probably weeks from now, have some numbers back to me. And they are going to try to quote it in two different ways. One is going to be two generators like this, one for each building. And the other way is going to be is one larger generator within a line run to the other building. Uh, so when I was initially thinking up here with line runs to the maintenance building, but they said it might make sense to do it back there and run a line this way. Um, but they have to run some of their calculations and look at it a little more. I would not expect that to come back immensely cheaper. Uh, these, those two backup generators are not, not made to be cheap in residential housing sometimes. You know, make cheaper than these commercial buildings, that's for sure.
My question is, you said because of elections, but isn't it that elections were held in the fire station instead of in the year?
We still have a counting board in here, um, that, and they have to have tabulators.
Right. And we have the idea of early voting now with the nine days on the major elections for the state in offense. So, you know, so there's, I mean, there's some there. But we got it done that, that week, um, that we were out. We ran, we ran an election training based off of a generator records to windows, um, and that type of stuff. So, I mean, it occurs. We got, and we got through the steps.
Right.
It is. It's a decent amount. And so I think the, the real question on this, I, I think it's a reasonable process, right, to move forward. But, you know, I don't think it's unreasonable. I, I think the, the real question on it is, do we want to try to move on it decently quickly this year? Well, we're making a quarterly budget adjustment to make up for that, get it in before winter. Or are we looking at budgeting for next year, which will be a further, a further discussion with the board going into, you know, inner spring budget discussion?
It sounds like there's possibility for more quotes, though, as well.
We'll at least get one more, yes.
Yeah. And then maybe discussion, um, to the necessity of maintenance. Like, I know they have air compressor and heat and being able to get the doors open. What do they need to feed off of the power? Would it be reasonable just to do the hall and then maybe do the maintenance building in a different year?
That could be too. We could phase it out.
Or if there was the idea of having one, centralized one and the power. If it was less than the two combined, then that would make sense, but maybe phasing it out so that it's not such a huge chunk all at once.
That's possible. Let's say we go forward, get another quote or two.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, we at least have the one rolling in. I'm gonna have to reach out to some other places, drop it out, and stay at someone else.
That's all we need, is a big heavy dump of snow, man.
So, I mean, your comment, Michael, you were thinking like, soon?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, let's get it done this year.
Okay. How does everyone else kind of feel about it?
Yep, I know that one. Yeah.
All right, I will work on it. Next, we have financial pressures. Uh, and I even have one to add from, uh, discussing today. And so one, one part of this is the playground. Uh, that's an order to get out a little bit, and I think we addressed decently well already. Uh, we had in the budget twenty-six thousand dollar potential tractor upgrade. They said that's better spent, uh, in the park, and so that's there. Now, when you look at playground equipment, it gets, it gets ridiculous time and fast. Um, the spectacle is in looking at commercial stuff. You know, we handle the telephone in different ways, so we could, we could limit the budget expenditure there. But I think it'd probably be reasonable, try to move on that this year. We'll have the Parks and Rec Committee, um, get some recommendations from them, come through the board, try to move this. I've taken some of the stuff up this year, maybe even get some, some things in. Probably not enough to complete that project to flesh it out, but the board could budget again next year for the rest of it. And finish off the bigger playground. Essentially, it's kind of, kind of what I'm thinking of. Does that make sense to everyone? The next thing are shared roads, all right? And this, this is pretty big, and Cedar Creek is pushing on this one pretty, pretty hard. Um, and so both of the supervisors to our east and west, the Fruitland and Cedar Creek, have called me in the last couple of weeks. And pressed on the idea of maybe we want to get the border roads. Hyde Park Road and Dawson Road, parts of them done yet this year. And so we, we've done a lot of road work over the last few years. Um, I, you know, and I always, I'm trying to plan for it for the next year. Right now, when I'm getting complaints on the road, which is, which is constantly. I am talking with the road commission about what should we be planning next year. Um, with the push for this year, I mean, it seems unlikely, but Cedar Creek, uh, is moving forward. They got quotes. On Dalton, north of M one twenty, and they had a meeting out there, and I went to it, and they, there was. You know, I think there's part of a political push because it's an election year. It is part of why both these road pushes are occurring. But their initial quote was for paving from M one twenty up to Duff Road. And now the quote is for a gravel upgrade, um, with lime base, which, which holds up better. Uh, up a little past that to a subdivision that breaks off, uh, in the Cedar Creek direction. And it is a two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar project the road commission has quoted as. They will only, uh, cover twenty-five percent, right?
Who's A?
Road commission. Yeah.
Okay.
So I've taken a lot of their recommendations over the last years, because when you take the recommendations, sometimes they'll cover fifty percent. Which stretches our money plenty a little further. Um, so, but if us and Cedar Creek are covering seventy-five percent of it, and each are covering half of that seventy-five percent. It comes to a hundred and nine thousand five hundred dollars a piece. So that would be the bill to an Dalton Township for that section of road. Um, which is no small, is no small chunk, and it is certainly not a small chunk to add in. Um, as, as a budget adjustment point, Linda, the supervisor over there, did want me to emphasize that Cedar Creek would really like this. She didn't, we haven't said, she would really like this, and they would really like the process on this, this year. So I, you know, I said right from the beginning of my turn, I'm not bringing any border roads to the board, because I know they're easy to hang up, because you need more people to agree. And so I wanted to get the, the board's opinion on kind of where, where we are. Are there residents on that stretch of roadway?
Yeah.
There are some. So as you get further down on the east side, there's more Cedar Creek residents that would be affected because of that little subdivision.
We have from M one twenty to Duff on the west side, is our, our tech space.
Yes.
Yeah, which is single houses?
I'm not sure. I'm a fan, but it's, it's just a few.
That's right, it may be one.
Three, three houses.
Great. Seems fair, just since I came from a project like that, that, that costs to be someone. Put on the shoulders of those residents.
So with, not to the extent that I would have it, putting my shoulders for it. Well, initially with their paving project, so I, so I spoke a decent amount at their meeting. Because I said, we're doing a paving project, it's gonna fry our entire budget, our entire road budget for a year on singing roads. And we have only done those through special assessments for that reason. We're like, we can't do any other local roads. And so I, I had told them that I thought there was no chance of the board approving a paving problem, which is why they got the grant. Because, yeah, I mean, otherwise, our entire budget, I'm, I'm wondering what's actually on road.
What was the cost on gravel?
And that is the gravel cost.
That's the gravel cost.
A hundred nine five.
From us.
Sorry.
Again, I think the resident side of, he assessed some of that.
There are nine homes in that section.
There you go.
Thank you.
And then it, I mean, it could be done. So you went through it from a resident, resident perspective. And so what we've previously done on that is we have people put in a petition and, and start that process, you know, it's a decently lengthy process.
Yep, it is.
Um, and so, I mean, it's, it's possible. I haven't, I haven't stopped legitimate petitions from going in. Kristi does not like it, because she has to have the special assessments into the system.
Just keep them coming, yeah.
I can pray. Drain commissioner added more, and one of those has been, in all the legs combined over the last few years. Um, but still.
There, there are a lot of them. The residents want this?
Of course.
Residents didn't ask for that, oh, the great, it's the townships that are going, why would you even put down the residents?
Well, that's, I guess.
They're complaining.
I came from a road project on our road here in Dalton, so I, I guess you'd have to survey the residents. I mean, I think they don't want it.
This sounds like it's, it's Cedar Creek and Cedar Creek coming to Dalton saying, hey, we'd like to get this road done, watch and share the cost. If the residents didn't initiate it, it's not fair to say them, oh, by the way, we're doing this road, and we want you to help us pay. Because they didn't ask.
Well, I'll go, I'll go a little more into the discussion.
Yes.
At the meeting. So, because the, the residents have had a big push, and it's been a push by the residents through Cedar Creek more than us on this section of road. I, I mean, I get, I get complaints on all the roads, but.
If our residents haven't asked you as more, that they want that road done, you should go to them and say, hey, Cedar Creek wants to get this road done. We want you to hop right out and help us.
So there was.
Help us with, uh, what was that?
Well, they didn't, they didn't do their portion.
No, they didn't do their portion.
Correct. So, that's why I ended up ramp. Once, uh, that's, we know where the line is over there, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's probably.
And so that's, but there was, there was a push at that meeting by some of the residents to say, yeah. They didn't have an issue getting a special assessment. I told them, you know, as far as Dalton's concerned, you can come down. I hope you fill out the petition, and go out and gather the signatures. And everyone was real confident in it, as they always are, um, at the beginning of such a project. Um, but we, we haven't had anyone like follow up with that. So, but that's just been a couple of weeks. So there was some discussion of that. I mean, people thought they would be able to do that. But, we do, because Cedar Creek's having a meeting tomorrow. And so I, I told Linda I would get back to her just on the direction we are with this. Are we interested in the project? Are we interested in the project this year? Are we interested in the project next year? Are we not interested in the project?
I think we should hear from the people that live on the road. Literally, because it's gonna fast down.
So you're telling, from what I hear you saying, the people in Cedar Creek that live on that road want it.
Right. And the people on the Dalton side.
Okay.
There were, there was a few of them at the meeting.
All right.
I mean, they wanted as well.
Well, then I think, I think we should delay it till next year. But in the meantime, those neighbors should get a petition going and see who's gonna sign on it. And see if we have enough real true interest, and tell them, you know, there's a real possibility you may end up having to put forth a little bit of money towards this project.
And if only a few came out of nine, that tells me three out of nine, so that means majority wasn't, yeah.
Nine on Dalton Township side.
Right, that's what I mean. If only a few came out of nine.
Yeah.
Most is split evenly.
No, it shouldn't be splitting the money. No way.
I think you should go based on how many residents live on.
Yeah, that's, yes.
Absolutely.
I mean, I could go to Cedar Creek with something like tax.
Yeah.
Um, you say that we want more of it than a whole ton of beets, but be too bad. Um, but it could be, I mean, it could be part of the difference.
They funded it with the budget or the special assessment.
They are funding it with their budget. They have, they have money in the road's budget as of now. I think, I think they plan on burning the road budget on this project. So based on it, do we end up with, we want to hear more, um, from the residents? Do you want to push on Cedar Creek and say maybe you should pay a little bit more?
Yeah, especially if you have more residents on it. They have plenty more.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That live on the road just still.
And not that live on Dalton and up in Sweet Lake.
There's a little subdivision that comes off of that road. Right? And, and we're looking more interested in budgeting for it if the project does move forward for next year? Yep. Are you kind of where we are in this?
I'm sure they want it done tomorrow, but.
They do. I don't think so. And so one thing that, uh, just talked to someone today, and so I forgot to throw it in here. We got the sign out front. Justin's, uh, working on getting some signs to fix it up, make it just a little bit nicer at a, at a very economical level. And a woman had come in and suggested that we need a, a better way to communicate with people, which is always, always true. Um, you know, so by email stuff, and try Facebook stuff, and try YouTube stuff, all of it is somewhat effective, but not immensely effective. And she said that it would be nice to have an electronic sign.
Oh, yeah.
That you could list like events happening, stuff like that. Now, an electronic sign out there like that's not, not necessarily going to be cheap. Um, but I wanted to bring it up to the board of if we want to look at something like that. Something like that, I think, would be reasonable to budget and have in next year's budget. I don't think there's a strong reason to push for it suddenly and get it in the fall or anything like that. Um, but I wanted to see where the board was on that.
I like, I like that idea.
Didn't we have this conversation before?
We did.
And we said no?
Okay. Just wondering.
We never decided on the whole aspect.
We had that thing. We did. What wasn't like necessarily electronic?
Right.
Yeah.
We did not have.
Pretty up.
Or an electronic.
It was pretty up, uh, very static.
So, like, you can, you can put anything you want on that sign, right, for information, so. And you can put senior resource information out there so that people driving by can say, oh, if you're senior, you can have your driveway lowered. Or have your lawn cut in the summer.
Yeah, that's potentially.
Because there's money out there, and it's, it's, yeah, it all ends up going to senior fraud resources. Only a small portion of it actually goes with seniors, because they don't, they don't realize it's available. And I got into a discussion on Facebook with a guy, and with that. It's like the people don't know that it's out there. There's got to be an easier way to let them know. And like, all down the township, all this township. What are all senior resources? What is available? So, this is picking up a phone and taking a phone call. A sign saying that would be good.
Yeah.
Yes, that's where I come from. I guess it's easy enough just to call instead of it, make expensive, put in a sign up there. If you want, if you want the information, it. I mean, I don't, I'd be, I mean. Internet's everywhere. I imagine, I know some seniors, like, that don't, that can't help, need help or whatever. I don't use that kind of stuff, but I imagine there's somebody there that's careful about that. And it's always votes free. Get a poll, get a poll about it and see what it looks like. If it's outrageous, then.
The other thing too is the speed that people go by. Like, we're not in a residential area where people are gonna go slow and be like, hey, look at that sign.
Same thing.
They're gonna just, oh, go right past it, not to read it.
That's three point two seconds.
That's true, too.
For a lot of. Staple road, you probably have one point two seconds.
See, I'm telling you, the road complaints rolling all the time. All right, yeah, maybe, maybe it's a, that's a budget, or at least, at least a discussion for, for that board, for, for the new board.
Okay.
Next, we have financial errors. Uh, I found it on the current audit and future. So we had an issue with getting the audit in on time last year, and I've written a newspaper article on that and brought it to the board at the time. Um, and we were hoping for this, this year to do better. Obviously, the actions that I've taken have, have not resolved that. Uh, and so we have, I would say, three major issues with that, uh, that we need to solve. But I've, I've explained a bunch of stuff in here to whoever wants to read it, look at the documentation. But the, the basic issues are the current audit that we're in. And I've talked to Eric, uh, Eric Dogger. I get along with him well through, through the whole process, and I've kept him updated. He's kept me updated. But both of us have been dark to a certain extent. Eric's a very fresh page. Um, and, uh, and I asked him, how can we get it done by September thirtieth, which is the deadline? Uh, he actually giggled a little bit, uh, and said that is, that it's not possible for this year. So last year, we got a letter from the state saying that we were late, um, violation, says failure on the top somewhere. Uh, for the timeframe, and that they are threatening to pull state revenue sharing. Once the audit goes through, we're still getting state revenue sharing, um, you know, ends up not being too big of an issue at that specific time. Eric said this year should be a similar process as far as that goes, right? But you don't want to push that. I was talking with him, and he said, two years of the, is a short term time for an issue like that. Um, and I said, okay, well, you can just, you can just delay every year. You can just stack those up, and it's not an issue. And he said, well, you don't want to push it to a long term issue, like three or four years. And so the difference between short term issue being two years and long term issue being three years is a very short period of time, one year. Uh, and so we need to set the township up to not have that issue next year, right? Uh, and so, right now, we had a quote, Kristi had reached out last year, when we had issues through Manor. And they, they have a second name on there, but I mean, calls them Manor because I can't remember their second name and slogan. And contracted them to come in, but it's. And contracted them to come in, but it's in municipal audit season. And now there are some CPA firms that mostly just do businesses, individuals, and we have a separate quote from, from one of those. But we need someone that does municipal audits. And so this firm has audited our auditors before, uh, they know what we're do, they're doing, they signed the contracts, they said they would still honor it and sent it in. So we're underway, we're on their list. Um, we have a shared drive that Christie has been scanning, uploading a bunch of things to and working on starting that process with others. Um, getting access to that and working on putting that information in, uh, as well. And so we need them to look over all those finances going back a, a, a long ways, right? To the, to the middle of twenty twenty-three. So that's the first issue and, and that's how I'm working on it. The second issue is to catch up the finances therefore for this, this year, so that we're setting up for the next audit, um, to be decent. And I think the discussion with Manor will be fine, I mentioned this to Manor, and I mentioned to Manor with some of the financial irregularities to look for any issues. Uh, if then when we're having to audit anything, should be investigated further. Uh, and I've, I've talked with Eric before about a forensic audit, because that comes up every time there's concern with the finances. And the issue with that, what we've had in the past, is no one had a specific concern or specific accusation, um, which Eric has asked for, I've asked for. But if you do a forensic audit just in general, he said it's gonna end up multiple six figures, you have to, you run everything to ground. And so if you have some sort of specific error, specific issue and irregularity, then run that to ground, uh, essentially doing an investigation specifically on that part. And that's how normally a forensic audit, um, plays out. And so a directed manner to, to look for anything like that, that then the auditor, um, Rickley DeLonge should follow up with on a deeper level. And I think after we get through this audit, catching up this year's finances with Manor, after they, they put everything in place, we should be able to do that, right? So that brings us to the third issue, which is the issue moving forward. And so some people thought, you know, bringing it out in public and whatnot is, was a little too aggressive, um, last year. But I think if we look in twenty twenty hindsight, it's not aggressive enough realistically to solve, because it didn't solve the problem, it was ineffective, right? Is probably a better term. And so we've, uh, Christie had reached out to Strategic CPA, um, in some other places, and Manor might be, uh, interested in doing this as well. We want to keep it somewhat financially reasonable, uh, overseeing essentially the financial operations, uh, making thing, sure things are getting done. And because of the power structure, um, within the township, it would make sense, I think, for something like that to answer directly to the board, right? So not to the executive committee, which is supervisor, clerk, treasurer, because otherwise they need to satisfy those people. But if they're answering directly to the board and making a report that becomes available on monthly basis to the public, they're answering to a larger group. Um, and therefore I think it will probably be a better, a better check, right? A, a better balance as far as that goes. Now, Strategic CPA has, has a low number, um, so three hundred dollars a month or something like that. But realistically, that's for people that pay, uh, ten thousand dollars or less, uh, per month on average and their stuff. So our, our number would be higher than that, they would have to, uh, quote it separately. And then Manor is unsure, they're still digging into our finances. Um, and Manor should have our pre-audit stuff done in September. Which means that, uh, Eric, uh, Rickley DeLonge, because we missed our audit week, we thought, I thought we were set for our audit week. And then we were not on the first day, or the second day, or the third day, or whatever. And so Rickley DeLonge was decently annoyed, uh, by that, essentially wasted a week and they'll charge a bunch of extra money like they did last year for it as well. Um, a few thousand dollars. Uh, they will not put us on their schedules until our pre-documents are officially ready, they essentially won't take our word on that. Um, and so he will schedule us once Manor gets done in September for the audit in October. It'll get filed and should be in in November, um, which is essentially, unfortunately, the timeframe from last year. So that's, yeah, that's how it lays out. There's a number of people about it because it's been a, a hot issue and it's obviously a major, a major issue. Um, but I want to see where the board is on that. Um, obviously, we're moving forward with where we are now, if anyone thinks we should be doing something differently, um, to get the audit done now. Uh, I don't have a good option on that, I, I think what we're doing is probably our best option and auditor has recommended, you know, this direction. Uh, I, I've asked him previously, um, when we're just, when we're just early, starting to fall behind, like, Eric, what can I do? What should I do? And he's like, not much you can do. Um, and so, uh, you know, decent amount of waiting there, uh, really, you know, test, test of patience, broken patience drills. Um, and so, but especially moving forward, the board has, I mean, a, a decent leeway, I think. And as I've, I've discussed it with other supervisors and they said, well, you, you just have to hire an accountant. Which is something that I considered last year to bring in, and they were talking about a full-time employee accountant just overseeing the finances. But that's a big salary, um, to just add to the docket as well, which is why I, I didn't pursue that over the last year. So, thoughts on the board?
So, from my understanding, some things didn't get paid when they were supposed to get paid. How can we as a board look into that and nip it in the bud, so to speak? There's no way to do that?
It's. It's difficult to.
It's her stat, clerk's statutory duty.
And that's, that's some of what we've, we've run into. So last year, I mean, it was a while ago now, right? And we were having issues making adjustments in the general ledger. One, been put off for months and months and months, very long time, and it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I wanted to step in and fix it, right? But it's not really my statutory authority to step in and fix it. But I did make one change. Um, so it's for a few hundred thousand dollars, I made one change in the general ledger, took me a short period of time to figure it out, and, uh, and I did it. And then I checked immediately afterwards with lawyer and auditor and said, this thing needed to be done. I did it, we've been waiting for a very long time, it's messing up my finances, it messes up my ability to make a correct budget or a quarterly budget. You'll see that in some of our meetings or other meetings where some of the things were off, um, and so just because the finances weren't updated. So the book lawyer and auditor said that was funny, uh, that one time that I did that, they said did not go to get it. And so, because it's not, it's not actually my place, um, to step in and do those types of things. It was near that time that, um, the clerk, previous clerk had ended up blocking me from the general ledger. And then I had a lawyer write, our, our lawyer write a letter saying I actually need access to the general ledger so I can work at the budget things, right? And so we've had, we've had a decent, you know, a decent amount of that. But I think that's why the idea of like a third party of business that answers to the board overseeing it and then saying, like, your, your finances, this has been done this month, this hasn't been done. Um, this has been partially done, this is late, uh, on, on a more consistent basis, right? It seems, I think it seems, it probably seems, it probably should seem like an unnecessary expense, um, to some people. But really, I, I think we have two years of proof that it's probably a necessary expense moving forward.
I would agree.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Which direction? On, uh, so if we're looking at, if we're looking at like an employee versus a third party, I lean towards the third party.
I, yeah, yeah.
Right, I mean. The, the employee thing is nice, but even if we went in that direction, I think that should therefore be a board hire rather than an executive committee, which is how we normally do our hires. And it's in the packet, but the board can change the, the authority for all the policies, lines of the boards.
One of those groups is going to show Christie and myself how to do stuff in the general ledger as well. So, the, my problem is the know-how right now.
And part of the services from Manor and Strategic CPA from who went with them, who were contracted, who Manor raised out, um, is they will, they will show us stuff and say, hey, you're not doing this process correctly or efficiently or whatever it is, um, and they will show us how to do that internally too.
From what you just said, they would be monitoring us at least monthly to keep us on track.
I, I think that's a good way. That, that way you can't get too far off base. Now, we could, I mean, we could hire Manor for like audit prep for next year too, if we kinda wanna double check boxes and make sure that we're. Uh, so because this year, I mean, me, Christie, Tracy and the auditor had a meeting and said like, alright, are we getting our paperwork together? Good to go, everyone's pretty good to go. Like, okay, cool, and I mean, Eric came out and sat with us at a table because he knew last year, last year didn't go great. Um, and I had authorized that, I'm like, yep, I'd appreciate it if you come out, Eric, because we pay a little extra for that. Uh, and so, but then it, but then it wasn't. And so if we, I mean, if we had a firm preparing the stuff, then we kinda know it's prepared. Um, and so how far we wanna go with it, how far we wanna rack up expenses, if we wanna maybe go over, you know, over what we think we probably need in the first year moving forward. So I mean, obviously, I won't be here for the next audit, but I wanna set the township up to like being in a good place.
Thank you.
Um, and then, and then if everything goes smooth next year, the township can obviously back off if, if needs to too. And then save some on the budget from those services.
And just to put.
Let's do.
You ask you.
Let's do public comment in, in, a little bit.
I was getting sick.
Let's do it now before you're done. I'm the devil's advocate. So, on Ori Haze, twenty-six eighty-six home road, I was the clerk before Tracy, okay? So, I'm gonna be the devil's advocate in your situation.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you talked to the lawyer about what you're talking about doing?
Yes.
It's statutorily her job and you cannot just preemptively say, we're gonna do this without a procedure in place. And it has to be in place before you try to do it. And the reason I say this is because I'm the elections coordinator, I run the county elections, Tracy's on the ballot for November.
Yes.
She could conceivably be.
Yeah.
Win and be back in this spot, even though she's resigned.
Yeah.
So here we are again.
And we have runners.
And now we're talking, you're staying short term, now you're looking long term. It's not two years anymore, now we're looking at three and four, unless you, unless she's gone.
Unless you do something.
Unless you do something. So I'm just trying, I'm gonna be the devil's advocate and make sure that you take the proper steps before you just start to do this. Because she can backlash, if she's back in that office and you do things without making sure that you can do it and try to protect her statutory job, she'll smack you harder.
Yes. And so I've had a number of discussions with, uh, with the lawyer about it and some emails, so.
You and I had discussions and there is a way to preempt it, preempt this and I'm hoping you did what I told you to do.
Okay.
Did you, did you contact the attorney general?
The lawyer is writing up a letter, um, now.
I, I want that in the office before I program.
For, uh, to the county prosecutor and the attorney general.
Yep.
So to look into if there's more extensive issues, I, I gave the lawyer.
I'm just saying, I'm trying, I, I can, I can see what will happen.
Yeah.
It's non-stop. And you're saying it's short term, but I know that the state is looking at situations like this and two years isn't necessarily short term. And especially if she's back in office for four.
Right.
And potentially, they, they could come in and, if this township loses revenue sharing.
Yep.
Oh, then already.
Yeah.
Correct.
Revenue sharing is almost fifty percent of our budget.
Yes. So it's, it's.
Huge for, for Dalton.
Yep.
Then we spray, then we go to bear moments, and if it gets bad enough, the state will put an administrator in and everybody's down to nothing.
Yeah, like, it's like.
All, all these positions are part-time, all your, uh, uh, everything is part-time and they come in and take over and do not want that.
No, we don't.
Do not. I'm sorry, I'm the devil's advocate today.
Yes, yes, yes.
You know what you're talking about, that's what's needed.
We'll, we'll have further public comment. I have one, I have one smaller item after this item, and then we're too public now.
I think having the monthly, I mean, if that's what you're saying, it's like a more aggressive route. Like, having that backup monthly, one, say Tracy doesn't come back and a resident steps in. Like myself, I don't have the know-how to do some of these things.
Yeah.
So, having a little bit of that learning curve with the backup to be like, hey, maybe we didn't do this process right, or maybe we need to do this process better. Having it in place is only helping the next person in line, even if it's not Tracy.
Right.
So.
As long as you follow the guidelines, you're not stomping out her statute, of the clerk's statutory duties, it's all, it's all fine and good. But you, you found out, you went and did the general, and you did those, when you did those transfers, I mean, the attorney said, it's okay, but don't do it again.
Don't do it again, yeah, but we got stuff done, so.
And you don't want, you don't want to set yourself up to, the township up to be in that position again.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I've been talking to scales about, about all this, so we've been racking up some water bills.
I know it's, it's tough to think about, but it's really, you know, I'm just thinking ahead, realizing she's on the ballot.
On the ballot.
She could be voted back in.
Yeah, and so it does, it deals with state law, uh, she comes up with your separation of powers, your checks and balances built into the township.
That's what.
Right, and that's what she's talking about with essentially who, who has authorities, who has power over which items in the township.
There is no check.
Well, that's.
There's wa, there's walls, it's pillars, it's.
It's more like pillars.
You can't, you can't, you can't step into her area and she can't step into yours and meanwhile, everybody can screw up and nobody's holding anybody accountable. That is at least.
Except the attorney general.
Structure, huh?
Except the attorney general.
Uh, except for the, and, and, and at the ballot box and for two or four years, right?
Right.
Which is way too late, way too long, so.
Especially when she's unopposed.
Do we need to, uh, find another clerk and get it written in or, I mean, do we, do we need to start a campaign? Because, or somebody knows somebody, let's start, let's get it done.
You find this, you find somebody to run against her and I will, I will spearhead a kick that. Writing campaign.
Never seen before because I was writing.
Yeah, we're on it.
Okay.
We're on it.
So someone could, that's a pretty, that's a good kept secret right now, you're on it. Write, writing campaigns, so that's the thing, there's, there's the potential that someone else ends up in the office, which, and then like Heather was addressing, it still makes sense to have some sort of training, support, whatever. So that the rest of the board and the residents know that things are being done in that situation. And then we also, I mean, she's unopposed, the writing campaign would, would be difficult, um, to state it optimistically. And, uh, and so there's, so we have to also prepare the township for, for that. So, but it is better to describe it kind of as pillars, I think you're right.
But, but.
I just.
Even if she did get back in, don't you have the, you have the authority to go with this audit program, right? To where they're coming in monthly and checking how things are going.
The board has that authority.
Right, right, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
But it needs to be a procedure that's in place.
Before.
You can't just say, because you're the clerk, we're doing it. It has to be in place by this board as a procedure before.
Just before the clerk's office, whoever it is.
Is, I'm saying whoever the clerk is, before that clerk takes office, it needs to be a procedure in place by the board, because.
So it's not a surprise.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, and that, and it doesn't mean that nothing could be messed up. It, it just means that if.
It just means that the board's gonna know about it.
If something is messed up, we should know about it almost immediately, right?
But even if we know about it, how, what can we do to justify it, to rectify it?
Well, and that's, that's why I say call the attorney general.
Awareness is.
You're still.
Five percent of the problem.
And you're, you're still into a power struggle there.
Yep.
Alright, so you're into the political parts of our organization functions. So, but if you're not aware of it.
No, no, you don't know. She can't, I can't take her name off, I can't figure out the ballot.
I would say we, yeah, we go forward with this.
As the current clerk, I support that.
And we go aggressive, go aggressive for a year or two, and like you suggested, we can back away.
If it's working.
And if what is working.
Right.
Must be less, really do quarterly than anything else. It just, he's the best, that's it.
If months later, we're finding no issues, then roll it back in the future at some point, ultimately.
The cost is a lot less from the penalty.
That's what I think.
That's, that's true too, it depends on how far the state wants to go, the, the auditor would not offer, um, e- even really much of a guess what exactly the state may do. He said, you just don't wanna test them, probably three years in a row, and see if they do anything. And so it i- it is at the point though where it's potential that the, the township may need to spend tens of thousands of dollars to save hundreds of thousands of dollars. So.
There we go, good thing you're making all that interest, my dear. There's a reason for that.
Anything else from the board on this, we can have, well, I have public comment, so, next.
What, Olson Road?
No, Dalton Road, we have the Olson Road. Next, we have, uh, clearing out old items process. And so this is brought up because, well, really because Justin's taken a big initiative of a bunch of stuff that's been broken and piled up for, for decades. And he's working on clearing it out, we have a building called cold storage, I mean, there are just non-functional tables and chairs and stuff in there. And we're gonna clear that out, organizing it, and so we're going through a bunch of stuff. And if we were still, if the, the township was selling stuff to major, a tractor or a truck, whatever it may be, I'll bring it to the board, the board will have to fit from, so we go through this whole thing. So what if we have some small items that seems un, unnecessary? Uh, now, I, we now work the transfer station on Saturdays, working a bunch of times, if someone comes there and wants to pick something out of the bin, it's always they don't fall in. Um, and, because we don't want, I don't want that in our liability, right? But it's, so I had a guy that had some fishing rods that are in just decent shape on Saturday. And he said, you know, someone, someone might want these. And he said, you know, someone, someone might want these. Can I set these off to the side? I said, set them off to the side next to the trash can. If someone picks them up, great. If someone doesn't pick them up, we'll throw them in, in later, not too big of a deal. And if someone takes that trash that would go in the trash bins, it saves us weight, which technically just saves the township money. So there's really no, no issue with that as far as I see. Right? Now, the metal is, is a little different because we get paid for the weight of the metal out there. Still don't consider it a huge issue at the transfer station itself with people trying to reuse things. There's a big push through the state right now to recycle it, reuse and, and all of that type of thing. And people use it in that way. And some of the items don't end up with too much metal in them. You wonder how much we're actually getting paid for versus the deducted money for the plastic that's in it as well. But it becomes different when you have employees, right? And so, because I wanted to bring this for other people's opinion. You know, if we have some chairs in, in the back room, we're going to end up throwing them away. And employees like, I could use some, some old semi-broken chairs. I'm like, I don't care. Take them. Otherwise, I'm going to chuck them. Is that, I mean, is that fine to do? Is that not fine to do? Is there a difference between the junk stuff that would just go in a trash bin versus the metal stuff that we potentially get paid for? Should we have a shorter, more like tightened out process for potential bids? As in, we have the executive committee decide and you do like a week instead of bringing it before the entire board? Should we just make a deal with one of these auction, online auction places? And if we have something, there was a, there was a tractor or a little lawnmower. I don't know what decade it's from, but not a recent decade.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine. All right. Oh, good year. Thirty-five years ago. And so, that's how I, I was born in that day. So. And so something like that, some metal item. Because if we're going to grant, we could go in metal bin. And Justin was willing to, he was like, I'll pay a little bit of money for it, do like a restoration project with my son. Seems fairly reasonable, but I've got nothing to base on, like, what am I going to charge him? Twenty bucks, fifty bucks? You know, what is someone going to consider reasonable versus not reasonable? Who's making the decision? Who's making the call?
So what would it cost to put into the transfer station?
You're going to get money for it.
Right. Residents can put metal in the metal bin for free and then we send it to paddles and paddles melt them down, it weighs in and pays us some money. That's why metal things are free.
Well, that's free. What is one man's junk is another man's trash.
Every time a village has, we're going to stuff up on the roadside. Without fail, every year when I put stuff out there, it's gone. Somebody comes by and it's out every year.
I, I guess, and that's, I mean, that's another process we could do. We could take the stuff to the transfer station ourselves that we're going to be looking at getting rid of junkie. Set it next to the bins out, like I allow people to do if they, if they want to. And then on one of the public days, that way the public has access to it too, not just employees. But if the public doesn't want it that day, no one picks it up, it goes to the transfer station, which I, you know, when I worked the transfer station, I see a lot of people go through there. And what if no one wants it, then an employee could get it just like, just like someone from the public could get it.
Yep.
That's good. The other side I have, we saw with the online auctions, I did that with others in state.
Yeah.
They, they'll come in for free, look at what you've got. And that might be a good thing because you could have somebody come in and say, is there any value here, significant value of anything?
Right.
And you, you know, they're going to tell you, you know, I mean, it's sentimental things. You think, oh, that's worth a fortune. And the auction guy will tell you it's piece of garbage. So, but that would be good to have somebody independent come in and say, no, that's not worth anything. Small stuff like chairs, I don't know. I don't know that it's that big a deal to just let that go wherever.
There, there seems like there's a certain threshold.
Things that might have value, again, your auction guy might be your best resource.
Just get rid of it, clean it up.
Isn't that considered light?
Put it out in front on the grass and Steve, write ourselves a ticket. Or let Steve put it on places. All right. So that, that's too much of a concern. I'm guessing if it gets a little higher in the threshold or warrants or, oh, we have a lot of items, maybe an auction house. Otherwise, no one seems too concerned with it. Owns a decently small, not going to give away a truck. Right? So.
When we cleaned out the maintenance building.
Yeah.
Before Justin started.
Yep.
There was like tools and stuff out there that had been like two times ago been replaced. And like, they don't really have like a lot of value now. But then like, obviously Justin's a very trustworthy and honest person. Say you get somebody in, it's like, oh, I just bought these brand new Milwaukee tools that I replaced. I would talk Milwaukee tools from last year. So I'm going to take the old ones home because I just bought new ones for work. You know, stuff like that is what you have to like.
That for sure has to be monitored.
Yeah.
Internally. I mean, at least where it's like, well, we're not, that's not the game. We're not doing that. We're not, we're not working the system. But if it's beneficial to the township, I, I would say that's where it has to come back to. If it's beneficial to the township to get rid of something. So what else? No, no big deal. So, but if it's beneficial just to the individual, but not to the township. But that's not kosher. Okay. All right. We are on to our second public comments. I assume we will have some. So if anyone would like to come up and let us know what they think.
I, I haven't said this for a long time. It's time. Same old story. We need a community center. I don't know.
Did you start a petition?
No, 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 I don't know. Maybe this next year, I know it's the end of the year, it's the election year and all that, but maybe next year we can start doing a little more. I'm hoping that we don't have any more severe storms. We've had a couple this year that, that community center could have been a really good thing to have. I mean, you guys been out of power for a whole week, you know, but. And the voting is an issue because our township is getting bigger and bigger. Steve giving all of these housing permits and not.
Yes, Steve.
We have no place to vote, you know, and, you know, I don't, I don't like it that we are bothering, you know, to be, our chief to be in the fire burning. We're in his way. It's noisy and it's loud. It's echoey and, you know, we always have people, it's, there's too much curbs and stuff for people to trip on and it happened twice this time around. And, you know, I just, we need something. We don't, it's ridiculous. We don't, we don't have a building that we can vote in, in this community. No, we did, that's a p. That doesn't work for us anymore. So we don't have anywhere. And it's, we need something. So it, we need to get a little more serious about.
I agree.
Before the township solves all, all of the rest of the property that we own. We, you know, the township has property that we can use. And, you know, we could get grant writers, we could do something to, you know, like, like we've been told, if we get a, if it's set up as a warming center, it's a cooling center. You know, like, you know, we can get federal money. So, you know, so. I'm sure the residents probably just thinks that's just one more thing to put on the ballot. We don't have to do that route if we don't have to. But on the other hand, we need it. There is nowhere, there's nothing in this community where we can vote, nothing that when we have emergencies, we don't, you know, there's, you know. And there's a lot of people that would help out. And I think it could also be something that could be rented and maybe not paid for itself and take care of some of the maintenance. But anyway.
What's it? Can I ask you a question? Location wise, where would you like to see something like that put up?
Well, you know.
But it's Dalton Township, which is the best.
I think, you know, Lakewood Club kind of has one. So they don't really, we, I, anything, you know, M one twenty would be great as far as, you know, because like when we had the storms. People, you need to be able to access. We can't have it on a back road where there might be trees all over the place. We need to have, it has to be kind of a, you know. Yeah, a main road, you know, main pipeline and, you know, somewhere where there's not a lot of trees that could fall on it. We don't want any trees falling on it. But, you know, I just think M one twenty would be more of a central, a central area.
We potentially, because we do have proper, different properties and stuff. I don't know how many we have on M one twenty.
That's my next question.
Take a chunk of that and allocate it so that it's not on the market for people to purchase or try to do bids on. And allocate that for the potential of having a community center down there.
Well, we only really have the one viable piece, the large, almost twenty acre piece.
We only twenty acres.
One twenty that could work for something like that. And realistically, the board can just deny it if it came up on the very first step. And no one's depositing money and stuff and someone requests it. And so, I know, I mean, the board can just decide at the time that, no, we're setting this aside for like kind of later.
Let's go to just take a couple of those acres.
Yeah, why can't we split it? I don't know if they want us to live next to the trees. But you never know.
There's the biggest representation of people that live Dalton Township. Where, where would this area be? Would it be like a twin light area, you know, twin light, wet lake?
I think so. For now.
I got the gist because I live in Twin Lake.
Right. But, but like this builder is going to be putting two hundred homes over. Yeah. Near the village. But he claims that he's going to put a community.
Yeah, that's going to be just the community center for that neighborhood.
That neighborhood, right.
That's not for.
That's not for Dalton Township.
That's not for all.
They won't have to have top of that guy.
Maybe he can build us a cheaper, yeah, he can give us a deal. Never know. Give you the property if you build us a building.
So in summary, it's interest in a community center.
Big time. Yeah. My husband could not going. You know that, Jeffrey.
But we had a lot of people, this last storm, that could have definitely used a place to go to take a shower and to charge their phones to get, you know, to be able to have a meal or something. I mean, you know, there's so many things that we could have helped out with. Because there was people that really literally had nowhere to go. For a week.
I, I just wanted to comment. I, I'm all for it. I think it's a great idea. But I think ultimately, and Jeff has talked about this before, it's going to have to end up on the ballot. And everybody's, you know, we're going to have to vote on it.
Really get after some great.
Well, must be good.
Couldn't remind you so you could put it on your agenda so you can, so you can put it on the ballot.
I mean, eventually, you know, I guess we'll get more serious about it, but we just need somebody who's capable of writing these grants or looking for the grants.
Amy's winking.
And, and those types of projects, even looking at hiring a grant writer, because grant writers can sometimes go on thousands of dollars for themselves. Is reasonable as part of the budget discussion to go into next year and say, what, when are we allocating resources to? Is it to trying to figure out if we're building a community center, that type of thing?
Because I mean, it's a long-term plan. Yeah, it's a long-term. Start out, what are you going to do in five years? What are you going to do in ten years? And how are you going to support it? Getting it built just to begin. And then, yeah, a community has to be a role. You have to have people that are willing to work in the community center and volunteer.
That's right.
I'm telling you, that's what happens. You need volunteers.
Put aside hundreds, breaks a year, probably decades from now.
We have a twin light star called Society. You know how many people work? Three.
Three?
Yeah, three. There's three.
I was thinking one.
That have done all of the work.
It is. It's a select here, self-selection bias, basically, that's the word.
And I'm old and I'm going to die and then. Well, either way.
Any other public comments on anything?
Thank you, church, your Dalton Township, Twin Light Library Room, Fifth Street. During the last storm that we had, many people did that power on three to seven days, maybe even some longer. Surprisingly, the library had power during all that time. And I did post it on our Facebook page and I shared it on the third department page. I really wanted that word to get out and get more people into go ahead and use our facilities, come in and charge your devices, use our bathroom, whatever you need to. I was there. And not that many people, many, if some people come in.
They didn't know power, they couldn't read it.
That's a problem. We couldn't get online to find that out. How do we find a way to get that word out? We need to find a way to connect us all together. When disasters happen, because they're predicting the worst one in twenty years.
A squirrel this year.
We have a generator. Somebody has.
If you guys can make a way of collecting information other than having a list and calling, trying to call everybody, someone that may be in the dirt. Yeah, I'd love to get that information out there. Because we were there waiting and hoping. The school does have a water refill station right outside our library door that we can help people find jobs, see how things like that. It was feasible to, to be helpful and we're not, we're there always to help anyone. And summer reading program ends this Saturday. So you as adults, if you have to write your six books, you got till Saturday. Since June tenth to August seventeenth. And then you get a quality power wash coupon. You get a free thirst milder. You get a free can of cold coffee, cold brew coffee. And we've got a white and forty in the back room. Bring your kids in and get all these cool crack bracelets with some jet pads. Kids stuff, all the big programs available, of course. But yeah, if you're doing reading time, make sure you go on metal dot org and sign that in or just walk in and bring us a list of things that you've read this summer and we'll do all the work for you, you know. That's what we're there for. We're there to help you in any way you need it. And two-on-one, we direct everybody to two-on-one. Anybody who know that needs help with their senior citizens, people with their kids. We've had homeschoolers that came in that their children needed, had special needs of equipment and things they needed. Two-on-one.
Sure.
Is, you know, hook yourselves up with them as much as you can.
And see, and even, even me sitting on the board, the only reason I knew senior resources did lawn care and snow removal was because I'm sitting here and I'm hearing it.
And attending these meetings.
And attending these meetings. And as you can see, there's not a lot of people that attend these meetings, but.
We, we get the word out, we share those kinds of things. So, yeah, use your life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else sign anything else? Right, then leave.
Most people dismiss.
How would we have support, support, support by Michael in a discussion among the board?
I have some pieces.